Good evening, everyone. Please rise for the invocation given by Pastor Jeff Wood from the First Presbyterian Church. Is Jeff here? Vice Mayor Adams, would you say the invocation, please?
Dear Lord, we come to you today with open hearts and a humble being. Please guide our discussions today to enable us to make decisions in the best interest of our residents and our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Hill.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Gilmore.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Here.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
Mr. McPartland.
Here.
Thank you.
I have a brief statement. Sebastian is a wonderful place, and it has been my honor to serve the citizens of Sebastian as mayor for many of the years that I have served on city council. It has come to pass now that three of my cohorts seem to be displeased with my current term, my fourth, and I have no wish to continue to serve as mayor in this current atmosphere and would point to Section 2.06 of our city charter, subsection E., which states vacancies. In the event the office of mayor shall become vacant during the course of a term, the vice mayor shall succeed the office of mayor. In the event the office of vice mayor shall become vacant during the course of a term, a new vice mayor shall be chosen as first order of business as the next council meeting. I've given my letter of resignation from the position of mayor to our city clerk Sally Mayo, and as of this minute, I hereby vacate the office of mayor. Congratulations, Mayor Adams.
Before we go on, I have to say I'm not thrilled about the whole situation here. Being mayor of Sebastian, Mr. Gilmore, I think, has done a fantastic job, and if there had been any issues, I would have hoped that he would have been given the opportunity to resolve the issues before a situation such as this came to being. That being said, though, the business of the city has to go on, and I will reluctantly take on the mantle of mayor. It is something that is a great honor, but at the same time, the manner in which it has been bestowed upon me is not the way I wished it to be.
Mr. Mayor, pursuant to that same portion of the charter, do you plan on calling for nominations for the office of vice mayor?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for reminding me. Can I have nominations for our vice mayor?
I have a question about that.
Yeah, I would say that we're still on item number five, and I appreciate Mr. Gilmore, but I would make a motion that this council's decision for mayor made on the organizational meeting on the November 18th, 2015, meeting be rescinded and direct the vice mayor to open the floor for nominations for mayor.
I would second that.
Mr. Attorney, is that the way we should proceed?
Well, now, we're in an interesting position because the mayor has resigned, and so it would be up to the council to decide whether to accept that or to call for a general organization, If the council decides to accept Mayor Gilmore's resignation, then the mayor has specified that you would take over. However, if the council decides not to accept this resignation call for general reorganization, then the motion is perfectly fine. It'd be up to the council.
So...
I personally do not accept the resignation because of the timing. There's been two whole weeks for this to have occurred, and it's the 11th hour. Had it been done, and we had a chance to deliberate with the city manager, or there's some timeframe involved, I think I'd be more comfortable. But at this point in time, I think we need to honor the council meeting agenda. To my knowledge, no one here knew any of this was coming, and I think we need to do the reorganization, and who knows? Vice Mayor Mayor Adams may wind up being Vice Mayor Mayor Adams by our selection. So I would move that we not accept the letter of resignation.
There's already a motion on the floor. I would ask the attorney, is that motion acceptable to cover a general reorganization meeting?
It's up to you as the maker of the motion to accept it as a friendly amendment. It can be offered as a friendly amendment or as amendment.
I'll accept the amendment to reject the mayor's decision.
But at present, I don't know if... Did you second his motion originally?
Yes, I did, and so I accept my friendly amendment also.
So do you wish to restate the motion as amended by the friendly amendment?
Indeed, I'd move to... I'd move this council's decision for mayor made on our original meeting on November 18th, 2015, be rescinded and direct the vice mayor to open the floor for nominations for mayor.
And not accept the resignation of mayor.
And reject the resignation of Mayor Gilmore.
Second.
I have a question for council. Does this mean, then, that every time we have three people that are upset with the mayor that we can have reorganization? I guess it does. We can have Mayor of the Month. Is that correct?
Whatever the council... Whatever powers the council granted with the charter, the council can undo as well. Since the charter specifically grants the council the authority to decide who serves as mayor, the council can undo that decision at a later time. In particular, the charter does not specify a term for the mayor, but it does specify a term for the vice mayor, and the only interpretation we can find regarding that is intentional. So since the mayor... Since the office of mayor does not have a specific term, then possibly it would... Your summary could happen. That is correct.
Well, and it sounds like you're interpreting something that the original intent, I think, was that the mayor would be there once a year. The original intent was that, once a year, does it not state in the city charter that the reorganization would take place after the election?
But...
It doesn't say "and whenever else you want to reorganize."
No, but it does not specify a specific term for the office of mayor, but the charter does specify that the office of vice mayor is for one year. And so reasonable interpretation of inconsistencies like that is that it must be intentional, especially in light of the number of charter review commissions that have reviewed this. So there must be a specific reason why the mayor does not have a specific term, but the vice mayor does. And the only interpretation can be so that whatever the council giveth, the council can take with the way. Okay?
Mr. Armitage, I'm not clear on what our motion is right now that we're hoping to vote on.
I'd like to be able to help you, but it went so quickly, and I'm a little bit confused myself, so it was...
The motion is to deny acceptance of the mayor's resignation and to move that this council's decision for mayor made at our organizational meeting on the November 18th, 2015, be rescinded and direct the vice mayor to open the floor for nominations for mayor and seconded by Ms. Coy.
All right, okay. Roll call, please. Does there need to be public comment on this?
As well as council discussion.
Tina Cafro, 631 Bayfront Terrace, Sebastian. I was shocked, Mr. Gilmore, because I thought you were doing a fantastic job. I'm saddened, appalled, disgusted, okay, with the members of this committee that you take up valuable time because you can't come together on behalf of the members of this town and act accordingly what they choose and wish to happen in this town. The bickering that seems to be going on among you is really appalling.
See any more? Yes, sir.
Norman Meyer, 107 Woodstock Way. However the council decides, whatever he's vice mayor, council member, mayor, whatever it is, I want to thank Mr. Gilmore for his work with the pollution of the lagoon, and he's very active with it, and I thank him very much for his efforts.
See you, Norman.
I'm sorry. No applause, please. Thank you. Seeing no more public comment, can we have the roll call, please?
Wait a minute. Council deliberations now. Mr. Hill, did you want to add anything to this discussion?
No, I would just say that I think I said enough at the last meeting. My goal here is not to embarrass anyone, not to shame anyone. I appreciate the hard work of every one of the five individuals who are sitting up on this dais today. Sometimes things just don't go in a direction that you think they should be going in, and when I start getting concerned about the direction that I see things, then I think it's my responsibility as a council member to police this council and to ask my fellow council members if they agree with me. I find that this council hasn't been moving in a direction that I've been pleased with. My concern has been the councils of 2008 and 2007 where there were bickering and terrible things going on. I don't want to see that happen. I appreciate the hard work of all five of the individuals who are up here. I look forward to going forward and working to resolve the issues that we have here in Sebastian and do that efficiently and do that as a team like we've done in the past, able to disagree and then move on to the next issue. So I think I've said enough. I appreciate the hard work of everyone here. I certainly support this motion. Thank you.
I got a lot of phone calls today they started, and just because I can't talk to anybody up here other than here, I'm really disappointed to see that there's a rumor out there that, Mr. Hill, this is all because you aspire to higher office. And that I shared with the people who called. I don't really believe that at all. I too prefer not to air bits and pieces of stuff that should just stay where it is. I admire Mr. Gilmore for resigning because I think after last meeting, that was pretty easy to see that something was coming, and I too applaud the work that he's done on the lagoon. And oh, by the way, that was another question I received today is, but what about the Indian River Lagoon Council? Well, you don't have to be mayor to serve on that board, and none of that's going to change. We are changing the position of mayor. Perhaps, vote hasn't occurred. So to all of those people who are speculating on why this is happening, most of the stuff that was brought to me is not true. So please, understand. I appreciate the transparency. I don't know if anybody... Council, did you read the letter from Ms. Munoz? There was a real good summary on some things that recently happened that was sent to council this morning. So, anyway, it's time to move on, and I believe we should go with... We've already made the decision to do the reorganization. So I am done with my sentiments. Is there any other comments? Otherwise, we can move to the vote.
Mr. McPartland?
I'm ready to vote. I mean, there's nothing else to be said, I don't think.
Call the motion.
Vice Mayor Adams?
No.
Ms. Coy?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McPartland?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
No.
At this time, I'll open nominations for mayor.
I nominate Jerome Adams.
I'd like to nominate Bob McPartland.
Any public input on this item? Seeing none? Ms. Mayor, roll call, please.
Okay, I'll state your name, and then you give me the name of the person. Ms. Coy?
McPartland.
Mr. Hill?
McPartland.
Mr. McPartland?
McPartland.
Mayor Gilmore?
Adams.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Adams. Congratulations, Mayor McPartland.
I'll open up the nominations for vice chairman. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, there is no need for...
Oh, no need? Oh, okay, we're good.
Vice Mayor Adams stays vice mayor.
All right. So that concludes the council reorganization. Any other matter you want to bring up as far as reorganization? No? Seeing none? Okay. Council, any agenda modifications? Leads us up to proclamations, awards. Ms. May, I didn't see Ms. Deagle today, a representative from Senior Resource Association?
They said they'd be here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Get that other one out. That this occurred, we prepared another proclamation.
Can you hear me? There we go. All right, this is for March for Meals on Wheels. Meals on Wheels does a tremendous service to the community. For a lot of the seniors that are out there, especially... One of the things I like, because I do work for the Department of Children and Families, and we do cover adult abuse investigations, is there's a lot of shut-ins and seniors, and the Meals on Wheels people that deliver the program, they are sometimes the only contact that these seniors have with other people, as well as the drivers are so compassionate that actually if they knock on a door and the person doesn't answer, or they say, "Come on in," they typically, they will make, what do they call it, 911 call just to make sure on their well-being and everything along those lines. So they provide a great service. So this is a proclamation for the March for Meals, March 2016. Whereas on March 22nd, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 and established the National Nutrition Program for seniors 60 years and older, and whereas Meals on Wheels America established the National March for Meals Campaign in March 2002 to recognize the historic month, the importance of Older Americans Act nutrition programs, both congregate and home-delivered, and raise awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger in America and has served our communities admirably for over 40 years. And whereas the 2016 observance of the March for Meals Campaign provides an opportunity to support Meals on Wheels programs that deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation, whereas volunteer drivers for Meals on Wheels programs in Florida are the backbone of the program and not only deliver nutritious meals to homebound seniors and individuals with disabilities, but also care and concern and attention to their welfare. Whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Florida provide nutritious meals to seniors throughout the state and help them maintain their health and independence and avoid unnecessary hospitalizations and/or premature institutionalization, and a powerful socialization opportunity for millions of seniors to help combat loneliness and isolation, whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Florida deserve recognition for the contributions they have made and will continue to make to local communities, our state, and our nation, and now therefore, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Sebastian, and on behalf of the Sebastian City Council, to hereby proclaim March 2016 as March for Meals Month in the city of Sebastian, urge every citizen to take time this month to honor our Meals on Wheels programs, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. Our recognition of and involvement in the National 2016 March for Meals Campaign can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in America.
Thank you.
(APPLAUSE).
Yes.
All right.
Can someone take a picture for us, please? Anyone? Thank you. Turn it on. It's not showing anymore, so you have to look through the screen. You should just be able to focus. Thank you so much. I do have a few words. Thank you. Thank you guys so much. My name is Shawna Callahan, and I'm the Director of Programs at Senior Resource Association. I oversee the Meals on Wheels program as well as our adult daycares. I'm thrilled and honored that the city of Sebastian has proclaimed March as the official Meals on Wheels Month, and next month, we will join thousands of Meals on Wheels programs across America that will mobilize to raise awareness for the growing number of older adults in need of daily nutritious meals and to address senior hunger and isolation. We're grateful to you, our city council members, and the many citizens and volunteers who are helping us continue to support and advocate for independence and dignity of older adults in Indian River County. We all know that aging is a fact of life, yet there is a tremendous difference between getting old and aging well. Two key factors known to influence how well most of us will age are nourishment and socialization. Senior hunger and isolation are serious problems facing communities across the nation, including right here in our own community. For older adults, food insecurity affects them differently than the general population. While they may have money to purchase food, often they lack the resources to prepare the meals or to access the food. They lack transportation. Functional limitations and health problems can prevent older adults from getting much-needed nutritional meals, and without them, they're more likely to experience chronic health problems. Because of our generous volunteers and donors, Senior Resource Association delivered 58,629 hot meals to homebound seniors in Indian River County last year. That's an amazing accomplishment, especially when it requires 90 to 125 volunteers every week to fulfill this kind of need, and we couldn't do it without them, and we need more. Right now, there are 106 eligible seniors who have requested a daily meal, but we've had to put them on a waiting list because the funding is limited. The cost for one meal is $6 per day or $2,200 per year per client. Now, that sounds reasonable, but it's simply too expensive for seniors who are forced to choose between paying for housing, medications, or food. Our Meals on Wheels program represents so much more than delivering food, as mentioned. Each meal delivery by volunteers gives seniors and their families a sense of security while also providing a daily wellness check, and for some clients, the visit by a friendly Senior Resource Association volunteer is the only socialization they experience all day long. Our nutrition programs include emergency Meals on Wheels, which provides meals to homebound seniors who have just been released from the hospital and therefore may not be able to prepare meals on a short-term basis. We did 5,626 emergency Meals on Wheels last year. By contrast, our social congregate meals are perfect for mobile seniors who are not able to prepare meals or who simply want to enjoy company. We served 32,256 congregate meals in five different locations throughout the county. Thank you again for helping us raise awareness of our organization and the nourishment needs of seniors in our community, and I personally invite each of you to participate in our March for Meals Community Champions Week, March 21st through the 24th. You can choose any day that best fits your schedule. We'll ask that all of our champions arrive at Senior Resource Association's headquarters by 10:00 a.m. on the day of your choice and allow up to two hours of time to deliver meals and network with other community champions. It's a wonderful opportunity for businesses, government leaders, and volunteers who contribute so generously in our community to publicly support our homebound seniors. As a prominent and respected leader in our community, you are in an excellent position to champion Senior Resource Association, and we would be honored to make you a March for Meals champion. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have little gifts before I go. Thank you. Thank you for the time.
All right, that'll bring us up to we have a presentation by the Indian River County Mosquito Control. Mr. Doug Carlson?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Mr. Griffin had asked if I could make arrangements to talk to you about some of the mosquito-transmitted viruses that were faced here in Florida, and certainly Indian River County is no exception. The virus Zika has received a great deal of attention over the past couple of months, and just like to touch on that a little bit as well. As far as starting this presentation, just want to point out that our agency is an independent taxing district. We have three elected commissioners, Janice Brode, David Foster, and Tom Loether. Our district was created in 1925, which coincided with the creation of Indian River County. We encompass 352 square miles, and certainly the city of Sebastian is within our district boundaries. Our operating budget for this fiscal year is about $5.5 million entirely from ad valorem taxes, and we have 28 full-time employees, and I would like to acknowledge one of them, Tim Adams, who is in the audience here tonight, very valuable employee of ours. Just to very quickly go through the basic mosquito life cycle, as some folks aren't aware of it. A female mosquito is the one that lays eggs. Once those eggs are flooded, either by rainfall or tides, they go through four aquatic stages, four larval stages, become a pupa. Shortly thereafter, they emerge as an adult. We use what's called an Integrated Pest Management Approach, IPM, and we do that through several different techniques. Source reduction, which is elimination of mosquito-producing habitats, and that is typically the most effective method. We use larva siding, which is chemical applications to kill mosquito larvae. And many of you, if not all, at one time or another may have seen the plane flying over the marshes in the Indian River Lagoon to kill those salt marsh mosquito larvae. And we also have an adulticide program, which is primarily truck-based, and that is chemical applications to kill the flying and biting adult mosquitoes. Want this to focus, though, on mosquito-transmitted viruses. And those of you who have lived in Florida for some time are familiar with several of them, which include West Nile, St. Louis encephalitis, and Eastern Equine encephalitis. And these three viruses are carried by birds, transmitted from bird to bird, and occasionally from bird to man or some other mammals. The habitats that produce the mosquitoes that are capable of transmitting these three viruses are largely areas such as citrus furrows, standing water, in various swales and the like, in pastures and freshwater marshes. Very different from a habitat I'm going to be talking about in a minute in regards to Zika and a few other viruses. Also, many of you are aware of the fact that since 1978, we've had a Sentinel Chicken program around Indian River County. Like many programs around the state, Sentinel Chickens work because, as I mentioned, those three viruses are transmitted by, or are carried by birds and transmitted by mosquitoes. Consequently, by putting chickens in flocks, in our case, eight flocks of six birds each, we're then able to take a blood sample of these birds and see if they have been exposed to any one of those three viruses. We do have one of those sites in the City of Sebastian. This graph is just intended to show you, going back to about 1978 or so, the incidence that we've had of infected Sentinel Chickens in our program. Obviously, we've had a couple of big years. 1990 was a very big year as far as St. Louis encephalitis goes. A couple of other years after that, 1997. Once we got past 2001, West Nile virus has become much more prevalent than St. Louis encephalitis, and we've had a few years when it has been in the news as well. You'll notice that six of these lines have stars by them in that, or at the top of them. And in that, we worked very closely with the Indian River County Health Department to help notify the public in years when there is significant risk to the population. Those six years were, in our collective opinion, hot years. And we advised the public to take precautions, and we stepped up our spraying activities at the same time. Now, I'd like to turn to three viruses, Dengue, Chikungunya, and now more recently, Zika. In the Western Hemisphere, all three of these have a distribution similar to what's shown here as far as Zika occurrence. It ranges from Mexico in the north down through several South American countries, Brazil certainly being a big example, as well as many countries and islands in the Caribbean. Again, that's true for all three of these viruses. They're all quite similar in some respects as far as symptoms go. Individuals who are infected with these viruses, if they show symptoms at all, typically have flu-like manifestations, although each of these three have some different component to them. And obviously, with Zika, as you undoubtedly have heard on the news, the one very prominent component of that, although it's not yet scientifically determined, but there's strong evidence that pregnant women who have contracted Zika may have children with microcephaly, which is a reduced brain size, and some severe defects resulting from that. There have been many occurrences of that over the past several years in Brazil. My understanding is that in a normal, non-epidemic year, there may be 400 or so children born with that deficiency. Over the past year or so, there had been 4,000. And so, the association with Zika appears to be quite strong. One thing that is important to point out with any of these three viruses is it's very common for imported cases to come into the state of Florida, to come into the United States. And by imported, we mean where someone has traveled to a country where Zika is prevalent, they've been bitten by an infected mosquito, they come back home, and they may be sick and may in fact have enough virus circulating in their blood whereby if a local mosquito bites them, could pass it on to another person. Again, imported cases are very common. Local transmission, though, is where it does become much more concerning, and that's where that person has come back, a local mosquito has bitten them, picked up the virus, and transmitted it to another person in the vicinity. While that has happened over the past several years with Dengue and Chikungunya, it has not yet happened in the United States for Zika. And we certainly hope that it will stay that way. There have been about 22 or 23 imported cases of Zika in Florida, but again, none of those have been local transmission events. Just to give you a little, very brief history of Chikungunya in Florida. First occurred in 2014. Again, all of the cases were imported both in 2014 and 2015. Looking at Dengue, which has a very long history in the state of Florida, although it came to an end seemingly in the middle 1930s and didn't rear its head again until 2009, 2010, when there were about 100 cases in Key West. Then in 2013, there was a flare-up of locally acquired cases in Martin County. So it looked as if perhaps it was getting a little bit closer to us, and luckily, so far, it hasn't. The one important point about these three viruses is that there are only two Florida mosquito species that can transmit these diseases. These two mosquitoes are known as 80s egypti and 80s albopictus. Unlike with the other viruses I mentioned where you have birds involved in the cycle, that's not the case here. It's simply a mosquito-to-man mosquito. Just the one item that is a bit different than that with Zika is that there is some increasing evidence that in some instances, it appears that it can be sexually transmitted. That seems to be true with Zika, not with Dengue and Chikungunya. One other aspect that's a bit concerning. And these two mosquitoes, egypti and albopictus, are what we call container-producing mosquitoes, or frequently here it is container-breeding mosquitoes. The previous slide that I showed you a few minutes ago of the citrus whale and all of the water in it, that does not produce these particular mosquitoes. They're ones that were probably all guilty at one time or another of producing them around our house, whether it be in old tires, bird baths, rain gutters, anything that will hold water around a house down to a bottle cap is in fact capable of producing these mosquitoes. So a message certainly is that we all need to work together to make sure that we are doing our best not to produce our own. One of the programs that our district has had since 1992 is on a weekly basis going around and hunting and searching for waste tires that have been disposed around the county. And during that 22, 23-year time period, we have collected 1,016 tons of tires, which translates to about 101,000. It's just amazing that on a day-in, day-out basis that you can go down the streets into some of the fields and find illegally disposed tires. Just some of the characteristics of these mosquitoes that I have been mentioning in regards to Zika and Dengue, they're primarily daytime biters, a bit different than the salt marsh mosquitoes that you're probably aware of. As we said, they are produced in artificial containers. Also, bromeliads, which many people have as ornamental plants, tree holes can produce them as well. Very interestingly, they have a very short flight range, and that's why it is convenient that each of us do a good job in keeping the problem off our property and maybe our neighbors. These mosquitoes don't travel more than maybe 100 yards, if that. They are very aggressive and persistent man biters. Going back to the culex mosquitoes that I talked about that are involved in West Nile and St. Louis encephalitis, they, on the other hand, are nighttime biters. Their aquatic stages, again, are primarily groundwater-based. They have a long flight range. They can fly three miles or more. And they're very stealthy man biters. In fact, they prefer feeding on birds. So some of the control actions that we're able to take in regards to Zika, Dengue, or Chikungunya, well, that's a problem. Again, these mosquitoes are not flying at night, for the most part, when our spraying is most effective. Targeted spraying around some infested residences can provide some help, but again, elimination of these container habitats is really vital. As far as controlling the mosquitoes that transmit West Nile or encephalitis, which we've been dealing with now for several decades, there are so many aquatic habitats for these mosquitoes that we're not able to do any meaningful control of the immature aquatic stages. But we do our nighttime spraying, which has certainly beneficial results on reducing those populations. And in the event of an epidemic situation, we have the ability to bring in a contracted plane to do aerial spraying. So with that said, really, the success in controlling local transmission of these viruses is necessary and dependent to have good community participation. And we hope that we're getting that message across today and that the council will support that and keep the message out there in with the public. We continue to work locally with the Health Department. And the other thing I would just like to offer to the audience is if you are any service group or a church group and you would like a presentation like this to your members, we would be glad to do so virtually at any time. So with that said, I'd be glad to answer any questions. I know your time is short, but thank you for the opportunity to be here and hope I can come again a little bit down the road.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. You taught me more about mosquitoes than I wanted to know. I guess the one thing is if you could give the number for mosquito control that residents could contact. And I know we have some of the slides playing on Channel 25, you know, and updated with any new slides the mosquito control has, as well as one of the big problems we have is citizens are responsible on their own property for those buckets of waters that are collecting to make sure that they empty them. So if you could give the number, please, sir.
Our phone number is 562-2393. And also, we have our website, which is www.irmosquito.com. If it's all right, and I can leave some brochures in the back, folks can feel free to take them, and my business as well. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you, sir. All right, it leads us up to brief announcements. March 18th, the Chamber Concert in Riverview Park at 5:30 to 8:00 p.m., and the band will be The Heart of Oak. So come on down. They've had great participation. Hopefully, the weather will be great on March 18th. So at this time, I'll recess our regular city council meeting. Oh, you want to?
Real quick, a brief announcement, please.
Rock on.
I did swing by Pelican Landing, had their assisted living and memory care open house this afternoon. Wow, is all I can say. Wow, this place is spectacular. If we, do we have anything on Channel 25 about Pelican Island? They will give tours every Thursday, and there's the phone number on here. You can call and arrange to come and be, take part in a tour and see what's there. They are 40% booked. And for you all who might not know where this place is, this is the place next to Walmart, that absolutely gorgeous-looking building next to Walmart. I'm sorry, St. Sebastian Church. Thank you for going. No, it's not. It's next to the church. So they are 40% full already, and it looks like they're going to open, they're talking about opening at the end of April. So if you haven't seen it, you need to arrange to tour if you know of someone who might need their services. They better start calling soon because it's not going to take long for them to book 100%. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that.
All right. Thank you. Any other brief announcements? All right. Okay, we'll recess the regular city council meeting and reconvene, well, convene as the Community Redevelopment Agency. So I'll call that to order. Roll call, Ms. Mail.
Mayor McPartlin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Here.
Ms. Coy.
Still here.
Mr. Gilmore.
Here.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
Thank you.
Brings us up to 8B. Approve the January 27th minutes.
Move approval.
Second. All right. Roll call, Ms. Mail.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that passes. Brings us up to Item C, award the facade signing grant to Captain Hiram's. Mr. Griffin.
Dory Bosworth from Planning Department will make the presentation.
Good evening. We received an application from Captain Hiram's. They have, they presented staff an application that would, they would like to change out the panels of their current existing signs with new colors and a new updated logo. They were requesting to, some grant money for a new fence, a new signs for their new hotel building, which is almost completed, hoping to open this weekend, and replace a worn awning with the new colors and logo. We did have a staff review meeting for that grant, and we really looked into the application itself to see if we felt that this met the intent of the grant, which is usually to remove blighted or non-conforming signs. There was a couple different sections in the code, as noted in your packet material. In 2008, they had previously received a grant for $15,000 at that time to replace some non-conforming signs. So the signs that they have there now currently meet code and they are conforming. Staff felt that it was not quite, I believe they were requesting $15,000, did not meet quite some of the intent and the items for a full grant, but we felt since they were going to be updating the site, these would be new colors, kind of a refresh to their parcel and their business, that we would leave this up to the CRA to review if they agreed with the staff review committee, but we felt $7,500 was a fair grant to help them with their update.
So staff is recommending approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to award Captain Hiram's 50% of the cost, up $7,500 for sign, refacing new signage, and fencing at a new hotel and awning replacement.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Tom Collins, representing Captain Hiram's. We spoke, you know, as you all know, we've been kind of upgrading our property, kind of constantly try to do, make the place nicer and nicer, and we're just getting ready to open another addition to our property. And as we were going through some of the signs that we have, we believe most of them are conforming, but they're not, they're just outdated, and we wanted to upgrade things. So we went through, we're also putting a fence up, we're replacing, renovating an awning that's been, you know, kind of dilapidated. And we wound up with about $35,000 to $40,000 worth of expenses that we're going to incur. So I talked to Jan and also Dory about, you know, whether or not the city would be willing to help us out a little bit. Of course, we're pretty big taxpayers, and our tax dollars are set aside in the CRA to try to help businesses.
Good evening. Tom Collins, representing Captain Hiram's. We spoke, you know, as you all know, we're, we've been kind of upgrading our property, kind of constantly try to do, make the place nicer and nicer, and we're just getting ready to open another addition to our property. And as we were going through some of the, some of the signs that we have, we believe most of them are conforming, but they're not, they're just outdated and we wanted to upgrade things. So, we went through, we're also putting a fence up, we're replacing, renovating an awning that's been, you know, kind of dilapidated. And we wound up with about $35,000 to $40,000 worth of expenses that we're going to incur. So, I talked to Jan and also Dory about, you know, whether or not the city would be willing to help us out a little bit. Of course, we're pretty big taxpayers and our tax dollars are set aside in the CRA to try to help businesses. So, it would be very helpful to us. We think we can, over the next 30 days, build a really, really nice upgrade to harms, whether it be landscaping, signage. We're putting some fences up, like I say, and, you know, out of the $35,000 to $40,000, we're going to spend 20, you know, a little bit around 20% contribution from the city would be very, very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Damian Gilliams, 1623 U.S. One. Really? I mean, are we back at this again, Mr. Mayor? You know the intent of that program, CRA, Community Redevelopment Association. We have septic tanks that are polluting our river, and you have businesspeople coming in here looking for welfare to redo their signs, when you know and I know does not meet the specific intent of what the CRA stands for. It is despicable. It is disgraceful. If you guys approve this tonight and continue to let our river be polluted and not set aside proper funding to get some of the businesses off septic systems, then this whole purpose of this program is a sham. It's become a sludge fund for the people who pay big taxes in the community? Really? Just go down and take the tour. Obviously, since you all work out of town, you don't have no idea what's going on on the riverfront. Are you aware that the parking you put in down there is being torn up, done with CRA money? Do you have any clue? Maybe I need to take you down there and show you what's going on. It's wrong if, for this to even be sent to this board by your staff as an insult to our intelligence, period. And Mr. Collins should be ashamed of himself. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak on this matter? Any council discussion?
Ms. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't see how staff could recommend this for, for a grant when they themselves noted that it really doesn't meet the criteria to be awarded a grant. Their signs are not non-conforming. The grant, I believe, is there to help people who have non-conforming signs, bring them into compliance with our codes. It's not there to help people to refinish a sign that's in compliance. It's not there to help them build a new fence. It's there for, for people who need, really need the help to bring their, their issues into compliance. So, this, for me, is really a stretch to believe that this is, is, meets the requirements. And to tell you the truth, I don't think it meets the requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would, I would simply state that we have given grants for new properties, new construction. I believe we gave grants for new signs at the entire kingdom when that facility was built. So, I think that this is something that certainly could be considered within the confines of the grant. Definitely something that should be brought forward to this board to make a decision on. I think that the $7,500 that we're discussing here, and let's be clear, when there's a bunch of bloviating about the potential for us to be wasting money on beautification of the businesses, which a facade sign and landscape grant is all about, and is bloviating about us not doing enough for the lagoon, we actually do have monies set aside specifically for the lagoon and specifically to help people get off septic. I believe the person that was bloviating knows that very well, as he did receive a grant from that, that pile of money, I suppose. I think this is, this is the true intent of the facade sign and landscape grant. It's the beautification of the riverfront and the riverfront district, and the millions of dollars that are being poured into this property by the owner only benefits this city greatly. I think that it's, it's very, very reasonable for us to, to provide some of the tax dollars that, that they are generating on their property, which are designed in the CRA specifically to go back to these businesses. I think it's more than reasonable for them to ask for a matching grant. I support this. I look forward to seeing the completion of the construction. I'm glad to see the rebranding that's going on down there. And I see the river all the time. I drive up and down the riverfront all the time. Enjoy and enjoy all that Sebastian has to offer. I think this is the, this is the intent of the grant. I think it meets the letter of the grant, and I think staff did a good job of providing us with a recommendation on this.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir.
Yeah. The only sign that I can see that I would, I would say meets the criteria, and we have done, Councilmember Hill is correct, we have done signs for new business. Is the new, the new sign K, do we have any figures on how much that costs? That's on page 32 of 88.
Their sign proposal just kind of listed all of them and gave one price. I think it's $26,000. They weren't broken apart.
Well, it's an eight by six by four foot sign for the east side new 16 units, sign K. That's on page 32 of 88.
We don't have a specific figure for each individual sign.
But we've had signs similar to this that have come through here for seven or eight or $9,000, have we not?
The monument signs.
Like this?
Yes.
Okay. So, I would have trouble paying virtually for the whole sign, because I believe that that's the only part that would, that would be in the criteria of the facade sign and landscape grant be appropriate. So, I kind of agree with Vice Mayor Adams. I would, I would, I would be, have a problem with 7,500. That's all I have. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Coy?
Thank you. I'm looking at page 32 of 88, which is a new sign also for the, it says east, east side new 16 units. That's a new sign.
That's what I was referring to.
Okay. And page 33, south side new 16 units. That's a new sign. Page 34, entrance to oyster K, new, new building sign. And page, let's see. So, there's one, two, three, plus there's a new business name. Blackfins is a new business name. And that's going on the others. I understand some of that point, but we're not even given a 50% grant. This is, the entire, the entire bill is, how much is the entire bill? 26?
$26,000 for the signs.
For all the signs. Now, we have indeed, on many occasions, gone in and redone signs that already are conforming. It's just a new business name. On U.S. One, a whole bunches of signs were initially done, made into nice monument signs, and then went out of business. Many of those. And we still let the new ones come in, and I'm sure there are some that we have done twice. I'm seeing a new name for business, and I am also seeing the new businesses listed here. I think the 7,000 proportionate amount is, is appropriate. The full amount would have been 15,000. We're doing half of what we would normally be allowed to do, and I think it's for new signs. And I also want to just reiterate, indeed, we have separate money for sewer, very separate money, that we're very generous with, and every year, $100,000 is sitting out there, plus some, for septic. And oh, by the way, the speaker receives some of that to redo their business. So, I'm really, I'm disappointed that we would want to confuse the apples and oranges. This has nothing to do with the lagoon and its separate CRA money for facade, sign, landscape. Those are my comments. I think the 7,500 is, is a good deal.
I'd have to agree that I think the 7,500 is in agreement. They're updating the signs. They have some new signs, and then they'll come and, you know, conforming to the, looks like the latest color as well as the sign. So, Ms. Mayo, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Adams.
No.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor McPartlin.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
No.
That passes three to two. That brings us up to 8D. Consider mooring field cost estimates. Mr. Griffin.
Yes, sir. The 27th January meeting, I was instructed to bring further information forward to council regarding cost estimates for a potential mooring field east of Captain Hiram's. Our city attorney, Frank Watanabe, has worked those numbers up, and it's in your packet.
Engineer.
I'm sorry?
Engineer.
City engineer, what?
Attorney.
City engineer, excuse me. I've promoted him. And we're here for your comments on, on those estimates.
Again, again, I was looking at the last meeting when you came up, and I can't see the city getting in the mooring business in any way, shape, or form. And I just wanted to see what the estimate would possibly be, and if somebody wants to do a public-private partnership in getting to the mooring business and bring it back to us, God bless them. Any other comments?
I agree.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just, like you said, it's something that I wouldn't want to see the city get involved in. And just looking at the, the estimate, $156,000, that's a huge amount of money that we could be using for so much other things that we really need to do. The mooring fields right now, I don't think are a priority, and I really don't believe we should get involved, even if there is a public-private partnership. I still do not believe this is something that the city needs to get involved in. There is anchorage out there already. It can be used without our involvement.
Thank you. Anyone from the public want to talk about mooring fields while it's open? Yes. Well, I just want to sum up the agenda. Let's see what the public has to say. Yes, sir.
Good evening again. Tom Collins, representing Captain Hiram's. When this issue all came out, it started many, many years ago. Actually, where it came to a head was the 2004 storms, when we had issues with boats breaking loose and, you know, they would crash into our marina, damage our property, and we really didn't have any recourse. The idea of the moorings, from my standpoint, was that it would, might be something would be helpful where we controlled the issue a little bit better. You know, after seeing these estimates, even though I think they're high in some areas because they haven't been bid out, but I mean, I appreciate what the, what the council did the last round was, hey, let's have a look at it. And these kind of numbers don't make any sense to me either. This is not, would be something that I received, our company getting involved with, it would be a moneymaker. This is more somewhere that we can somehow control the boat, okay? After kind of the lukewarm reception from the council, you know, the other, the other time, which I certainly appreciate, and after this report, it doesn't make any kind of sense now. That maybe 10 years from now, maybe some, you know, private involvement from our company or somebody else, or the river, the new riverfront district down there where they have the, the working waterfront might get involved and might make some sense. So, I just want to thank the council for taking, making a diligent effort to go over and look at it. And, you know, maybe coming back to, we are trying to work with the Coast Guard right now to see if we can't get some sort of ability to regulate these boats that just anchor and leave and, you know, cause some problems. So, when I get a little update from them, I'll come back to you all and see if we can work with the council. But I do appreciate you having taken a hard look at it, and we'll move on from there. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to talk about this? No? All right. At this time.
Yeah, we have one more.
Oh, oh. Thanks for keeping me straight.
Ben Hocker, City of Sebastian. In our budget, I believe you're still carrying it, there's $18,000 that was left in when the mooring fields came up multiple times before. Maybe somebody can tell me that, yes, it's still in. I believe it is. And we might be able to take that monies and put it towards the yacht club bulkhead that's been deteriorating and falling into the river for the past two-plus years, and all we do is put dirt in it. The mooring fields would really not benefit us, because we have no place for eye mooring there, taking a little rowboat and coming in and tying it up. I'd probably have to pay for that. It was offered to use the restrooms and the laundry. I'd probably have to pay for that. And the burden is, the way I saw it, put onto our police force to, or the city, to monitor the collecting of the mooring fees. And again, you've turned it down many times before, but just because it comes before you from a business down here, several of you, and I, I don't like saying this, but accept funds for campaigns, and a little more discretion might be helpful. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right. That's it. I will adjourn the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting and reconvene as the city council. Brings us up to Item 10, the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second. Ms. Mayo, roll call, please.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Brings us up to Committee Reports and Appointments. We have the Natural Resources Board. Ms. Mayo or Jeanette?
Go ahead. She takes care of those.
Rachel Husme has withdrawn her application, so you just have the alternate that wants to move up to the regular member position.
Okay. So, the alternate wants to move up to the vacancy. Sounds wonderful to me. Congratulations. Any other comment? No? All right. Well, thank you for serving.
Thank you.
Brings us up to Public Hearings. We have our second reading and public hearing of ordinance number O-16-01 Drone Regulation. Mr. Attorney.
An ordinance of the City of Sebastian, Florida, providing for the regulation of drones, providing definitions, providing regulations for supervision, locations, and restrictions for the use of drones, providing exemption, providing penalties, conflict severability, and an effective date.
Second reading. Do you have any presentation on this, Mr. Griffin? Nothing? All right. Counsel, any motion on this matter?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on the drone regulation? Yes, sir.
While he's approaching, I left a letter in front of you from Todd Smith from late this afternoon. He called that in and asked that you all get a copy of it.
Yes, I got that. If he's not here, I'll mention that as well.
Good day. John Bang Olsen, 1034 Human Drive. I've recently purchased a drone, and then I look at your outline. My drone has smart technology. You push a button, return to home, goes up to 82 feet, and returns back to home. But your outline says 35 feet. That's one thing. And then, if you were going to fly within the city limits, you need to call an airport to get permission. And right now, it's, looks like it's, you fall, you come under, you fall under Miami sectional charter. And I have an FAA license for my drone. You have no tower here. Would I have to call Frank Wantaabe to get permission to fly within the city limits? I'm 3.7 miles away.
My thing is, we're in the initials, seeing if we're going to pass the ordinance on the drone thing. If it passes, then I guess, Mr. Griffin, he would be in touch with Mr. Watanabe?
He would, he would be in touch with the airport manager, and I would, the airport manager would direct him to the FAA.
Okay.
I'm complied with all FAA now, and I, according to FAA, I can fly up to, excuse me, 400 feet.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak about the drone regulation? You're welcome, sir. Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak about the drone regulation? Yes, sir. If you come up, state your name.
Sean Frank, 617 Noble Street, Sebastian, Florida. I understand what he's saying. And I'd just like to say that, I have a paper here, that the FAA has stated back in 2015 of December 17th, that they're recommending that any state and local governments contact the FAA and discuss this with them first. They actually recommend that you do not impose city ordinances against what they've already stated. They already have regulations set about the, for this. So they're asking you not to do this because you're, essentially, you'll create a patchwork quilt of differing restrictions. So you could end up opposing what the FAA already has set and go against them in certain ways. And let's say something was to come about in legal terms, it could hurt you in a sense. Because if somebody is following what the FAA has already set aside for this, then your law of 35 feet or something like that, it may be frivolous. So I'd just like to urge you to actually contact the FAA. I don't know if you have, but contact them. I have information where you could contact them here. And that's about it.
You can leave those with the city manager.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak on the drone ordinance? Okay. I guess we have the one letter from Mr. Smith. Do you want me to read the whole letter, or can you put the letter in the packet that the whole council get the?
I think we've all got it. I don't think it's necessary.
Yeah, we all have.
Okay. It's basically Mr. Smith, who lives in Sebastian, he's in opposition towards the drone ordinance. So...
Mr. Mayor, if I could speak to my motion. I think, looking at this ordinance, I think it's been very well thought out. The concerns that I would have in other ordinances that I saw that controlled drones made exceptions for lawful businesses. In fact, we were over in Lakeland to some friends of ours over the weekend. And he's a real estate professional. And he's got a very expensive drone with cameras and everything on it that he uses in his business. In fact, he just listed like a $1.2 million estate, and he's going to fly the drone and take pictures so that he can put that on the internet. But our ordinance does have exceptions or exemptions for lawful use of drones on behalf of federal, state, municipal government, City of Sebastian, law enforcement, behalf of a business or commercial enterprise. So for those people that use drones, and I'm sure that there's more and more use of these things going on, I think the intent of the ordinance is not to restrict the lawful use of the drone, but to keep it from being nuisance. And I think our chief told us when this first came out, that there's more and more issues with people photographing stuff in their neighbor's yard and calling the police department on them because they have something in their backyard. I don't know. But I just think it's a well-written ordinance. ordinance.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I have a little statement here I wrote, so I wouldn't forget what I wanted to say. So let me begin. So first of all, what is a drone? It's an unmanned aerial vehicle. In today's world, a drone is typically a remote-controlled flying machine with four rotary blades. They weigh anywhere between .5 and 55 pounds. A drone may not be categorized as a toy helicopter or toy plane. Those toys don't have the flight distance capabilities, are not built to be equipped with cameras or weaponized. Some drones are equipped with cameras and have audiovisual recording capabilities. I'm here to focus on drones, which could become a public nuisance or worse, if not properly regulated. My intention is not to interfere with anyone's enjoyment or their business practice. My intention is to make it safe for all involved. Drones improperly used have the potential of causing serious harm. With the proliferation of drones, we're all too familiar with the news stories of incidents that have resulted in injury to persons and/or property. Channel 25 recently had a story on drones, I think it was this past Monday, in which someone spoke of how dangerously close a drone came to hitting him while he was giving a tour at the Jupiter Lighthouse. We heard stories of commercial airlines coming close to or spotting drones in and around the airports. We've seen other news stories where people on the beach or in places, or in other places, were knocking down drones because they felt the drones were invading their privacy. Drones need to be flown at 400 feet or less and always be in line of sight of the operator. There are, these are some of the FAA rules. Yes, the FAA has rules. Some people may say then, why bother with a local ordinance? The answer to that is found in one of these same FAA rules located at their Know Before You Fly website. And it states, "Check and follow all local laws and ordinances before flying over private property." That, to me, says you're allowed to put rules in place to maintain the safety of our city and its citizens. My concern with drones started out as a matter of safety around the airport, including its airspace. It would be terrible if a drone were to interfere with an aircraft during landing or takeoff, or with a skydiver during a jump. Can you imagine the disastrous outcome? Privacy issues came up regarding drones. Some drones have the ability to fly over a half a mile. Can you imagine a drone equipped with a camera flying to your home and recording you while you're in your backyard, or recording you through a window in your home, where you expect to have some degree of privacy? It may seem trivial or far-fetched to some, but I bet you won't feel that way if it happens to you or a member of your family. I find that sometimes we get so caught up in trying to prove each other wrong, or discredit, or discourage each other's request for change, that we fail to step back and look at the big picture. There's nothing illegal, ridiculous, or overstepping in asking that regulations be put in place to safely monitor a fast-rising sport for drone enthusiasts that could at any time pose extreme risk and harm to the residents of this community. Our priority here is for the safety and welfare of our residents. And remember, we're not the only city looking at an ordinance. Actually, Miami has such rules in place already. And there's a huge list online of other cities within this country that have ordinances and rules restricting what drones can do. And also, if I'm not mistaken, the FAA and the NTSB are looking at putting regulations in place. They may have FAA regulations. They're not being enforced. We need to enforce something to protect our citizens.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I hope there's not a lot being taken too personally up here. When we have disagreements, we have disagreements. And that's just the way it is. That's why there are five people here, not one. So that we would create laws that sort of chip away at the liberties of the citizens of this community, that there are more than one opinion. So a simple disagreement does not make friction. It should be looked at as, you know, we're all individuals up here, and we disagree all the time. I disagree very much with this ordinance. And I think I made that very clear at the last time I was here, because I clearly believe that there are plenty of laws in place already now protecting everything that you guys described. There are privacy laws. And I thank Ms. Coy very much for the research she did when the questions were brought up at the last meeting about the privacy. She said, "Show me those laws." And rather than wait for us to show her, she went out and looked and found them. And I think that the laws that she found are the ones that protect us and already go well beyond what this goes to by protecting the privacy of our citizens. You know, when we start talking about regulating toys out, you know, we could get hurt flying, I mean, a kite could fly away and run into a car and cause an accident. And there, everything in the world has a slight amount of, I would guess to say, danger to it. We can't regulate safety in all regards. And for me, I think that the discussion that's taken place with allowing the ones, the businesses to have theirs, what we are talking about are eliminating toys in the City of Sebastian, overregulating toys. And there are thousands of these, I would assume, in the City of Sebastian. And we would be making children criminals by flying them in the road. I'm very much against this. I understand where the genesis of this ordinance is in the desire to look towards safety of the citizens, which is a main responsibility of ours. But I would see this as a, very much an overreach and overregulation. And I could never support something like this.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one more, one more time. I think it's very clear that we're not talking about toys. The definition of a drone is something that we're looking at as something that would be not a toy, something larger. I think Mr. Adams just read the definition of what we're talking about controlling. And, you know, our police, our police chief, I believe Chief Morris gave us good direction. She's concerned with it. And so am I. So I believe it's something we should do. And the thing, thing about municipalities, the great thing about municipalities is that they can, they can have different rules. They can have different wants and desires. And, you know, if you want to fly a drone, you can go out to the county, you can go to the airpark, you can go out to Vera Lake Estates, you can go all kinds of different places and have fun with it. But, you know, I think it's something we need here in Sebastian. That's all.
Mr. Mayor, I hate to, hate to go back and forth, but just for clarification's sake. May I have one moment?
Might as well.
Thank you. In this law that we're looking to pass, it clearly states that a drone shall mean an unmanned aircraft that can fly under the control of a remote pilot or by a geographic positioning system, GPS-guided autopilot mechanism. That's every single one of those little helicopter toys that the kids are buying at Marshall's.
Ms. Coy?
Thank you. I think the statute from the State of Florida is very, very clear. And thank you for acknowledging the fact that, yes, indeed, I went and see what the State of Florida had to say about this. And it's, we have the FAA laws, and the state has provided. It's under Florida statute 934.50. It's under 934, and it starts with .50. And it's pretty clear, prohibited use of drones. A, a law enforcement agency may not use the drone to gather evidence or other information. That's exactly what the police chief was addressing, that the police are not allowed to use that to do surveillance. I think there might be a disagreement within the police department that we need to iron out and find an answer to on B, prohibited use of drones. A person, like me, like the gentleman who has one, a person, a state agency or a political subdivision, as defined in section 11.45, may not use a drone equipped with an imaging device to record an image of privately owned real property or the owner, tenant, occupant, invitee, or licensee of such property with the intent to conduct surveillance on the individual or property captured, and it goes yada, 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 on and on, in the way the Florida, the State of Florida does. I'd be willing to put this off for one more meeting to get a clarification on this, just to make sure. But I, let me ask the city manager. Are you, are you comfortable with the Florida statute? My concerns, too, are the airport. And now we have gliders. Oh, my gosh. They're beautiful to watch coming in. But now there is another uncontrolled, like the parachutists coming in in our airpark. Are you convinced that we're protecting the airport? And how much space is it, how many miles around the airport does the federal regulation cover?
1,000 feet and 3 miles. The, and I would remind council about what I brought up when we had the first reading of the issue of preemption by the FAA that comes about. It does seem like this Florida statute is fairly all-encompassing, that FAA regulation was due to come out in September, as I stated when we had the first reading. That has not come out yet. The last speaker who was up talked about an issue that I had included also in my agenda transmittal at that time, that said, "You have to watch out for this patchwork," and that there were 10 of these municipalities or counties around the country who had these things in place, which I cited in that agenda transmittal, which frankly, were doing exactly that. And that's what the FAA is concerned about. And frankly, I agree with them. But that's why it was all brought forward with the evidence that we presented.
I, too, don't, I mean, I see potential abuse of the use of drones. Not saying that the gentleman here or anyone who happens to own one now. But, I mean, you get a scrappy neighbor. I can see this, you know, I got the picture. And we already have had incidents in the city. It's been reported that people take a picture of something in your backyard that you may not supposed to have there and bring it to the police department or code enforcement and say, "There, I have proof." You know, and oh, by the way, the chief told me that if I, and Mayor McPartland, that, you know, if we take our baseball bat and bat it out of the sky while it's taking pictures over my property, I'm liable for disruption, destruction of private property. And, you know, that doesn't thrill me. Because if something's flying around, I'm probably going to get that baseball bat or whatever I can use to reach it. Because it's not necessary for people to be flying over my house taking pictures. There's really nothing there to take pictures of. But I'm offended. So I want to protect people and children and private property rights. But I don't want to overprotect it either. There's such a, there's overreach. So where's the happy median? If, I tend to think that the Florida statute, in combination with the federal statute, is sufficient. Because indeed, we do have commercial operators. I've talked to realtors, local realtors, who have these. And they are licensed through FAA, the proper procedures. They are licensed to use them. So I'm kind of content with, I'm more than kind of content. I did ask, "Show me the rules," and then I went and found them myself. And I think the Florida statute, in combination with the federal statutes, which are going to change, probably, are sufficient at this time. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you. Let's clarify a couple of points first. I didn't say I would hit it with a baseball bat. I said I would knock it out of the sky first with my slingshot. Then, of course, I would use my baseball bat on it. You know, again, you know, and I think this drone issue, again, it's gotten like personal. It's like a right and a wrong issue about something. And I look from the very beginning, even before I got on the agenda, the airspace over your house is the United States government's property. It's run by the FAA. You know, the issues that the chief was talking about between neighbors, it doesn't matter how many ordinance we draw up. If those neighbors have problems with each other, they're still going to have problems with each other. You know, and I don't want to minimize anything like, you know, and nobody is for keeping kids and people safer than myself. But this law is not going to change that in any way, shape, or form when the FAA has the authority, as well as the State of Florida. There are things that are going to keep coming. And, I mean, and I guess the only two places that you can't fly, one in the county, would be low over my house or by the gun range. Because if you fly by the gun range, you could be shot out of the sky. So having said all that, roll call, Ms. Mail.
Mayor McPartland.
No.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Ms. Coy.
No.
Mr. Hill.
No.
All right. Okay. That motion fails. Okay, that brings up, we have no unfinished business. This opens it up to public input. If anybody has something to say that's not already on... If anybody has something to say that's not already on the agenda, now's your time.
Yes, sir.
My name is Graham Cox, Level 1213 George Street in Sebastian. I've been sitting with great interest for the proceedings tonight, and I've got to say that this might not be the most opportune time to bring this subject to you, but I'm going to do it anyway, and I ask you for forgiveness if you don't like it. Two weeks ago, I attended the February meeting of the Indian River Council, Indian River Lagoon Council, at the Harbor Branch Symposium on the condition of the lagoon. At that time, the chairman of the Indian River Lagoon Council asked people to suggest actions that could be done right now to improve the lagoon. Mr. Bob Stevens, who is here tonight and I've been sitting next to, lives on Conca, I think it's Drive or Street, in Sebastian, explained to the council, to the lagoon council, what he had witnessed in the canal in the back of his property in January of this year. They were spraying herbicides that he is convinced are killing not only the plants on the canal banks, but the fish and the birds along with them. My house also backs up to the same canal. I have observed that bird life is much diminished and that it's very rare to see anyone fishing in the water or for the banks of the Stormwater Park. Bear in mind, what is sprayed in the canal eventually finds its way to the lagoon itself. Since that Harbor Branch meeting, we have determined what those herbicides are. And I know the city already knows what they are, but it took a little to determine. The main one is Roundup Custom. Now, there's many versions of Roundup, but the one that they're using is Roundup Custom. I've spoken directly with the district manager of Applied Aquatics, and I understand he has the contract to do the work. His name is Wade Ferris. He was very helpful and only too willing to tell me what the chemicals are that they use. He's mailing me the MSDS sheets for each of the chemicals. We discussed alternative means to control vegetation along the canal that would not be harmful to the environment and potentially to human health. I've provided you, and you're probably sick of getting emails from me in the last couple of days, I've provided you with the details of the chemicals that they use, the MSDS sheets that I downloaded from the internet. I've provided them to the council, I've provided them to the city manager, and to the staff of the Indian River Lagoon Council. I've also provided you with several articles that discuss the potential effects of the herbicides on fish, wildlife, and humans. I am not a chemist, I'm not a doctor, but when I read that stuff, it scares the hell out of me, frankly. In my judgment, this issue goes far beyond the city of Sebastian to the whole lagoon watershed. It would be encouraging if Sebastian is willing to take the lead and discuss first the nature of the problem that prompts the use of the herbicides, and then discuss alternative non-toxic means to solve it, if indeed, we do have a problem along the canals. So I'm asking you tonight to agree to consider the information that we've provided so far and hopefully agree to suspend the herbicide spraying until we have a better scientific evaluation of the situation. I would be happy to be part of any ongoing discussion on the issue. We want to be positive, to be constructive, and come up with some answers that are practical and cost-effective. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I, by the way, I'll leave this and the emails I've sent everybody as hard copies to the.
Thank you. You can give to Ms. Mayo. And I got your emails, Mr. Cox. They all just went to my spam folder, so I have to check that, and I forward them on to the city manager. No, I got them. I know it's you, I know you're kind of safe, so not sending me a virus, so that's good. But thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sure, Mr. Griffin, we're looking into the chemicals that are being used, are they approved by the, you know, the Department of Environmental Protection and everything along those lines?
Well, the company that we use, Applied Aquatics, sprays in a number of areas. Hardy Park, all of our canals, the Twin Ditches, the airport. I can't think of a body of water, except for casual water, that they don't spray. I would note that although Mr. Stevens hasn't seen any bird life around his house, there is tons of it at the airport, tons of it at the golf course. I mean, frankly, the sandhill cranes that are there are really sometimes a detriment to the traffic flow. And I have seen personally over the last 10 years hatchlings at the airport of cranes and ducklings and other things, and it's thriving. So if, I don't know why the wildlife isn't at his house. I did question Mr. Stevens when he came to talk to myself and the city engineer, I won't make that mistake again. And he stated to me that, I had asked him that, had he seen any carcasses of dead animals and things like that? And his answer was no, that birds just weren't there. So frankly, I don't know why they're not there. They're migratory. Maybe they just don't like his backyard. But I would say that there are other bodies of water. I mean, take a look at the Twin Ditches, and all the bird life and the other animals that live in the Twin Ditches at the airport. We have, there are coyotes out there. There's an enormous amount of wildlife that drinks that water after it's serviced by Applied Aquatic. Applied Aquatic is licensed by the state of Florida. They do work for the St. John's Water Management, South Florida Water Management. Just about every government agency, Fish and Wildlife, Fish and Wildlife all over the state of Florida, I don't know what more we could do. And just because they suppose that something's wrong doesn't necessarily make it so. I don't see why we should suspend things. We have a mandate, actually, from St. John's, I believe, and the Hardy Park project, where we have to use herbicides to control that growth. So we do something like that and stop unilaterally, we open ourselves up by getting a nasty phone call from St. John's. I don't know that I'm prepared to do that, to put the city in that position.
All right. Well, thank you. I guess the only other, you know, the idea I had come in my head is if it was done manually, maybe we could contact the sheriff and see if he had some labor that wanted to do it by hand, what that would cost, if they leased it out to us. I mean, that's a potential, you know, thing, but, I mean, the cost of doing it manually would be astronomical compared to what we are allowed to do at this time.
If I can make another comment, the gentleman talked about Roundup, and that is one of the, one of the chemicals that they, herbicides that they do use. But there are different kinds of Roundup. And Mr. Gilmore knows about the, they use Roundup, a diluted version of Roundup, at the golf course. Now, there's a perfect example of where that got out of hand last summer, and perhaps they didn't do it right on some of the greens. But as a matter of course, it's used, and it's a diluted version of that herbicide. So I'll take direction from council, obviously, on which way you want to go with this, but those are my comments.
All right, thank you. Any other comment on that matter?
I just, I would like to see the list of what's being sprayed in the canals, and I want the list to come from the agency who's doing the spraying. And I'd like to thank Mr. Cox, he and I had a conversation this morning, or, gosh, I think it was this afternoon, and he's done some further research, and I appreciate that. Because I want it to come from the horse's mouth. I want to see what that stuff is. And then I want to know, if it's diluted, okay, how much? And they'll have that information available. I'm very curious, because I personally don't use Roundup. That's real bad poison.
All right.
For me, I know, oh, Mr. Hill, I don't want to start a war, okay? That's my, it's poison at my house, and that's, and it's not going to change. I don't use it. But I'm not saying it's not appropriate, diluted, and managed by a company who gets paid to manage it. So I think we could discuss this some more, because there's an interest, we keep getting the emails. But I want, I want the information to come from the source, and not just from, we think it's a...
All right. All right. Anyone else with public input? Yes, sir. Well, Mr. Cox, you had your time, so you, well, if you sit down, you can speak with Ms. Coy after the meeting, any of us after the meeting, email us. Yes, sir. What are you doing? Rock, paper, scissors? Here we go.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bob Stevens, and I live on the corner, I live on Concha Drive. And I live on a big body of water where two of the water systems meet. I've invited a few people to my house whenever they want to come out and have coffee and look at the wildlife in front of my house. And you're welcome to do it before Applied Aquatic shows up, and welcome to do it after and see what happens, see what the smell is. And if you have any respiratory problems at all, come on when the wind is blowing after they spray, because it affects humans as well as it does everybody else. I don't know why our city manager is bent on spraying these really toxic chemicals, but if you come to my house, six or seven weeks after they've sprayed, you can see a little bit of grass, and you might see a little minnow or two, and maybe the birds are thinking about coming back. They may be walking along the edges of the water. But after these guys have sprayed, 24 hours, things go yellow, 36 hours, things go black. And the grass that was that high is gone. The little fish are gone, and the birds don't come by anymore. The big birds will yak about it, and they'll fly overhead. The birds that do land and eat something out of there, they'll change their voices. This is bad stuff. Now, I spent two days at the college down here for this, part of this big meeting where all the scientists in the state gathered to figure out what's wrong with our big body of water. And they all said, we've got to stop what we're doing. Just stop it. Yes, it's going to be hard to get big sugar, and it's going to be hard to get the septic systems in. Those are big things that are going to take a lot of effort. And a lot of people are having a hard time trying to figure that out. But the chairman of the committee said, please. And he addressed the mayors and the municipalities in the state, please stop what you're doing. We've got to change. Everything is dying here. If the big body of water is dead, can't we get the small bodies clean for the birds? Give them a place to eat and live for a little bit till we can get a chance to work on the big one? I mean, wouldn't it be nice if Sebastian said, hey, look, we've got clean water, and our birds are back, our fish are back, we've actually got grass? If you look at the picture from the scientists, pictures of our water system, the grass is gone, all the way from my house out to the St. Sebastian River, all the way out to the lagoon. The grass is gone. And this stuff that Applied Aquatic sprays is wonderful stuff. It kills everything, except the red pepper. Doesn't kill the red pepper. Now, this is the prime time to do this, because the chairman of the Indian River Lagoon Council said there is short-term and long-term money available. I mean, you had the right idea, let's, can we get some work crews out there, some minimum security prisoners to get a crew going and work some of it? Or can we get a subcontractor? The initial startup is going to be a big deal, because we've got to get rid of some of those pepper trees. When the city manager says, well, we're obligated by the water company to keep spraying, he didn't say why. We're obligated to keep the water flowing. That's what it says. Doesn't say we're obligated to spray, and doesn't say we have to poison our waters. Says we have to make it so the water flows if necessary. Well, in front of my house, there's no plants, there's nothing in there, yet every six weeks they come and spray the edge of my black water. And it stinks. I recently had a neighbor say, his granddaughters were down from New York someplace, and they jumped into the river, into the canal with a dare from a neighbor. Come out of the water, brought them up to the house, cleaned them up. After two showers, they couldn't get rid of the stink on these kids, the chemical smells. I live on this lagoon. It stinks. When the wind blows into my house, it stinks. And when these guys have been freshly spraying, you need to shut the house up, because I don't breathe well. I have a COPD condition, and I fill up with mucus. It's not instant, but that night, I fill up with mucus. How many people are we dealing with in Sebastian with respiratory issues? How much of this stuff are we going to take? A couple key words. I know I don't want to take all your time, it's been, you've been...
You got about 15 seconds, sir.
Yeah, I'm done. One thing, let's bring up a couple key factors. And these scientists are bringing these factors up to me. DDT, Agent Orange, and the Love Canal. Y'all remember those words? That's all I'm going to say.
All right.
I'd like to continue this, and like Mr. Cox said, I'd like to volunteer and see we can get a committee together and work on these problems.
Well, we have a natural resources board, you can go visit them at any time.
I'm part of the Natural Resources Board every month, and they're, got their hands tied.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, sir. No, ma'am, he was next, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Bill Rickby. I live at 8465 59th Avenue.
My name is Audrey Rickby, 8465 59th Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, tonight, I'd like to talk on something that happened last year, on the November 18th meeting that was held in this chamber. And it was regarding the CNG facility and the contractual obligation that you guys have with waste management. And I'm confused a little bit, so I'm here to get some clarity in my confusion. The CNG that was mentioned in the contractual obligation with the waste haulers, was that taxpayers' money?
No.
It was not taxpayers' money?
No, that was a contract we made with them for the pickup of the trash.
So in other words, I want to understand it. And so in other words, the CNG facility that was incorporated in the contract, that was an agreement that was made with the...
Are you talking the one that they made down in Vero, or are you talking about...
Here, Sebastian.
Here. Well, we didn't make one here. We had that part of it in our contract. If waste management was to obtain the recycling for the county, we would look at incorporating a CNG station. So we're kind of at an impasse, I guess you could say, with waste management, trying to work out what was in the contract and everything along those lines. So there is no current CNG, no taxpayers' dollars involved with that.
Okay, so you're saying to me that the CNG now...
We don't have it.
You don't have it? So that part of the contract is avoided, that's what you're saying?
We are in talks with waste management concerning that.
Okay. Then my, then my next question to you is then, is this, Mr. Mayor, is that if you incorporated it in the contract, what laws, what obligation, what, let me put it like this, what Florida statute laws were you following?
Let me tell you, this is the beauty of contracts and why they have so many attorneys out there. And that's something we're trying to work at and get to the bottom of and try and resolve the best way we can. You could look at the contract, and I guess you could argue this side and that side of the contract. Somebody says, well, if it was viable, if it wasn't, it's an ongoing thing.
So let me ask you this then, Mr. Mayor. You said it's an ongoing thing?
Well, let me give you a history of my background, Mr. Mayor. The history of my background is that I was a contract manager for over 20-some years. That's the history of my background. And all I did was monitor contracts. And I can understand when you tell me that I can look at it this way, that way, however way, however way deemed necessary. But, Mr. Mayor, I have a problem with that, because if it's a contract, it's a contract. And whatever's written in that contract is just like cutting stone. I can't say in a contract...
I can't say in a contract it's this way or that way. I have to buy about what's in that contract. Now, if the contract gives me room to, I'm going to say maneuver, then I can maneuver. But whatever's in that contract, it's called a binding contract.
Right. We only got about a minute for this conversation. So I mean, if you want to speak with the city manager as to this, I don't understand. I'm trying to figure out how I can resolve the situation. This is, you know, we had a contract with them. This has come up. They haven't done it. I can't say, you know what? Your contract is null and void. Nobody's getting their garbage picked up.
No, no, that's not what... I'll tell you what I'm going to do, Mr. Mayor. I'm not, I'm not here to say the contract is void. I'm not here to say that no one's going to pick up no contract. I'm just trying to find out the legal ramification here. That's it.
As are we.
You know? So my thing is again, is that if it's a, if it's, if it's a CNG contractually and you're saying to me that, hey, you're trying to work it out, however it may be. But I did hear in this chambers that, uh, one said it was, uh, uh, let me get my words right. One said it was that it was a default. One said it was a major breach of contract. Before I sit down tonight, can someone please tell me what is a major breach of contract? And what is a default?
I guess that would depend on what lawyer you talk to. You talk to three different lawyers, you'll get three different answers on that. As well as you'll get three different answers up here on council as far as some consider it a major breach of contract, some didn't. And we're not attorneys and we are in discussion with them. And we're trying to resolve the situation. I'm sorry, but that's the end of the five minutes and this is something we could talk about forever. Yes?
Okay.
Well, before I sit down, I'm going to say this. You're saying to me tonight is that it's an attorney issue? If that's what you're saying to me?
I'm saying we have a contract with Waste Management. That was one of the things of the contract. Is that a deal breaker that's going to end the contract? Not necessarily. To, to get out of that contract will require legal action on probably both the city's part as well as Waste Management. You're talking a lot of litigation. So I can't give you an answer because I'm not an attorney. And I can't tell you what we want to do as far as the council going forward with the current contract that we have.
Madam Clerk, before I sit down, will you please make a note to the, uh, please make a note to the record that I asked a question, I asked several questions. I, I did not get the answer that I wanted to get. Secondly, uh, did Mr. Mc...
Okay. Sir, that's, that's, this is the end of time. It's public input and you didn't get the answer that you wanted.
I can't yield my time to him, Mayor.
Okay, if you sit down here, we'll give you five minutes. Let's, let's go, five minutes. Yes, sir.
But I yielded my time to him.
Go ahead. I said you can go. Start.
No.
You could sit down, sir.
I yielded my, I can't yield my time to him?
I said you could have your time. No, you can have your time.
But my question is the same, Mayor. I'm not trying to be disrespectful.
My answer is the, the same as it was before. I'm sorry. If you're not happy with the answer, I'm sorry with the answer.
Okay, but I'm going to say, okay, your parliamentary procedure is saying that I cannot direct nothing to the clerk of the clerk. Is that what you're saying to me tonight?
What I'm saying is this is a public meeting. What you said will be transcribed as well as it's being taped on the thing. So you can say, yes, I didn't, I'll say it. I didn't answer your question to your sufficiency.
Not to my sufficiency according to the law.
To your sufficiency, I did not answer the question.
Because what I'm saying here tonight is...
I'm not a lawyer. You're not a lawyer.
No, I know, I'm not, I'm saying, but I do know a little law. But what I'm saying tonight is that...
Sir, please, that's the, that's the end of the time.
May I just comment as they're sitting down? You have to be really careful when something's under litigation. I'm sure anyone who, who is familiar with law and deals with contracts would know that if something is under litigation, we're, have to be very careful in our dealings. So this is in the attorney's hands. We're not trying to be nasty about the issue. We, we are waiting for the attorneys and for it to come back to us as a governing body. That's the bottom line. I'm not allowed to comment on it.
Yes, sir.
Ben Hocker, City of Sebastian. Just a little comment on, since it was brought up, Waste Management. I am getting extremely tired of being woken up at 6 to 6:10 every dime they come to pick up the garbage. I believe our contract says 7 o'clock. It might help for some of you negotiating. But at 7, 6 o'clock in the morning, that truck's coming down over near Joy Haven, picking up the garbage. Also, it's not dropped in the same locale where I put it. And the lid is open. You look down the street, well, the lids are open. Drive down Barbara, you'll find the containers in the road. Drive any road. They just pick, drop, and go. Congratulations. Are you to be sworn in or do you just assume that position on a vote? Because the mayor prior had to be sworn in, I believe.
I did not. No.
We don't have to?
No.
No, just pick a person and do it.
Thank you.
Again, thank you.
And what's your address over there at Joy Haven? I want to take a look.
Oh, you're going to come by at 5 o'clock then?
Hey, look, I'll, I'll beat my horn.
No, they do come by at 6, the 6 a, 10 after. It might help with the contract. And I am glad that we didn't see the natural gas here. After listening to those people explain how the system works with the amount of time, the amount of vehicles, so we'd be running like a natural gas fueling station, again, for a private company on city land. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. If you could sit, I'm sorry. Get a little lost. Yes, ma'am.
Andrea Ring. I am a member of the Natural Resource Board. And they have come in front of us several times about this, um, problem with the herbicides and the birds. And, but one thing I did learn was that if you want, you can put out in front of your house a sign and ask them not to spray. And they're not supposed to spray at your house if you have the sign out. So I just, that was one thing I learned. And yes, those herbicides are not biodegradable, which really is very disconcerting because it stays in the water.
All right. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Damian Williams. Congratulations. I, uh, thank you for taking my call today, by the way, and getting back to me. I appreciate that. I, uh, specifically asked you on that call that we had before the meeting today, would you be supporting Mr. Jerome? And you did not want to answer me that question. Now I see why. Because there was a conspiracy here this evening and I can understand that. And I'm a little disturbed by what transpired. So I just want to get that off my chest because I specifically asked you, would you support that gentleman if they, Mr. Gilmore resigned? And you said, well, we're going to have a reorganization meeting, just for the record. So I thought that was very unethical. Anyway, let me move on. Mrs. Coy, we're not in litigation. There's not been a cause of action with Waste Management. So let's get the record straight. To my friends that were here earlier that spoke previously, the city is in default. I mean, the city's not in default. Waste Management's in default. They did not perform their contract under the terms of the agreement and the city is trying to renegotiate. So for the record, they are in default. They did not perform according to the terms of that contract, period. So to my friends over there, you can give them a straight answer. You don't have to dance around the taxpayers in this community and they deserve a straight answer from their mayor. So if you don't know the facts, direct it to your attorney and maybe he can explain it to them so that they don't have to sit here and get a little dance and a song. It's not right. Another thing, let's correct the record, Mrs. Coy. I did not receive a dime from the city pertaining to my septic system. They set money aside. So get the facts correct. I did not receive one penny. So let me move on, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, you haven't seen me at these meetings, but I'm going to make it a point to come down and visit you more often. I went to a meeting the other day and I was really disturbed by the fact of what's going on with the surplus property here at City Hall between the Art Club, the Senior Citizen Center, the Embroidery Club. It looks like there's a free-for-all. Everybody's trying to get free space. And I specifically asked the city manager at that meeting that you need to have a standard operating procedure policy put in place. And there is one for surplus property and how it's to be disposed of. It's not to be given to members and friends of the council. It's supposed to be advertised and it's supposed to be put out. So all clubs in this community have an opportunity to get space here at City Hall. And if that means we have to charge, then we charge. I found out at that meeting and I heard Mrs. Coy say that she's charging or maybe they're volunteering a dollar per visit at the Senior Citizen Center. And she quietly said that we raised over $10,000 at that meeting. To me, that's appalling that if you visit that center five times a week, that's $5 a week, times four weeks in a month. Do the math. That's not what a senior citizen's about. And then I find out that she's writing checks to her favorite organizations in the community with money that she's raising on city property. So, Mr. Mayor, this council needs to direct staff to get their house in order with the nonprofits of this community so that the surplus property of this community is disposed of in a proper manner and that favoritism is not being handed out to certain groups by using the term, we must get our paperwork in order so that you can get a proper lease. That's hogwash. And everybody needs to be treated fairly around here. And that's not what's going on. Special councilwoman, special council people are getting special deals around here and it's not fair. With that, I just want to thank the city manager for setting aside $700,000 and you going along with it for our roads in this community. Our roads and our swales are deplorable. We need much more money to be applied. Oil prices are down. Asphalt is cheap. We need to get a major plan put in place to fix the potholes, to fix our roads, to repave them and get on a master plan so that we, the taxpayers of this, of this community, can drive on decent roads and have decent, decent swales so that we don't have mosquitoes coming to our community.
10 seconds, sir.
That was five minutes?
That was five minutes.
Really? You keeping track?
Yes, I am. And I keep track of our phone calls that we have and every time I return, every phone call you ever made to me. And you play bits and pieces of what you want to say is for the public to hear. And you're very good at that. Gifted, I would say. You know, you put on a spin of a thing and that's the way it is. But that's not the way it is. And you talk about the senior center like it's some council members piggy bank that they're doing something. No, it's the Senior Resource Association that does that, right? The senior center that does that. And I think if somebody didn't have the dollar to come for that day, I don't think any, I'm sure somebody, if they didn't take a dollar out of their pocket, they would allow them to come in there for free.
I didn't see that they...
Well, no, that's what you're implying in your thing.
That's not what I'm implying. I said it was voluntarily.
And I'm just responding to some of the things that you said because there's people who actually believe some of the things that you say. And that, and that is...
Why don't you check their bank account? They should have their paperwork on file.
Well, your five minutes is up, sir.
Why don't you check their bank account?
Thank you, sir.
Do you have it on file like you're supposed to?
Thank you.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard. Kumbaya. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
May I respond to some of the accusations, Mr. Mayor? There was, this was pick on Andrea and I. Welcome back, Mr. Williams. Haven't seen you in a long time. I, I, I agreed with one thing that you said. The public has a right to know the truth. That's the only thing that I agree with because everything else was the spin. So let's start with Andrea was on vacation for the Waste Management meeting. Andrea was not on vacation. She was sitting right here. It was November. I was here and we are not in default. This contract is not in default at this point in time. It is under, the attorneys are working together, our attorney with Waste Management's attorney. That's where we are, period. So that was a bunch of bunk and baloney. And the public has a right to know the truth. Now, I am really sorry that three board members of the senior center just left because who would have expected that the issue would have come up? I really don't feel comfortable sitting up here and speaking for the senior center, but I'm going to because the senior center does indeed ask for a dollar donation from people and we have no lack of people coming in with a dollar. And yes, indeed, sir, you were correct. If they don't have a dollar that day, they get to abide. So there's no membership fee like some other clubs. And oh, by the way, we don't have enough room for the people that are coming. In the summertime, it'll lighten up. We'll, we'll be good to go. So there is not a lack of people willing to pay a dollar per day to use the facility. So to, to, and, and I'm not going to ask the senior center to come in and fill the room and tell you how, how grateful they are for the place because all you have to do is stop by someday and see them. It's a wonderful activity. So to disparage something that the seniors run, that a board runs, and to say that it's, it's a council member's project and I get special. The paperwork will soon be at City Hall because all the nonprofits who get space are being asked... Mr. Griffin, did you send a letter out today or yesterday? To the, all the nonprofits?
We're really formulating the list, but, um, they went out to 11, 11 organizations.
And I'm, I'm assuming the senior center is one of them. And, and in it, we will be asked to provide, uh, our documentation for, uh, being a nonprofit, our 990 forms for the past three years, the, the letter from the IRS that states that we are, our status as a nonprofit and several other items. And every, all the nonprofit organizations in the city who receive discounted services for park usage, like 50% off because they're a nonprofit, or building space, places like the Historical Society, the Art Club, and the Senior Center, will all be under the same guidance. So there is a policy. And yeah, maybe it took a little bit longer than it should have, but good for us for realizing this is something that we needed to do and it's, it's coming down the road. It's in place. And we're treating everyone the same, even Andrea's senior center. It's not mine. It belongs to the seniors. And the three board members who were sitting up here have all the documents. And oh, by the way, our finances are available. Our, our books are open. You can call the treasurer and see the finances. All the members of the, the club can view the finances. Any day of the week, they're available at the, at the senior center. So it's, we're transparent. And oh, by the way, we're going to put this stuff online. It's coming. My good fellow is going to do that for us. So we're transparent and we expect everyone else to be. So enough of that bad information. Pick on me all you want, Damian, but you know, I'm, I don't go away. I'm going to respond to bad information. So keep it coming. That gives me a chance to rebut. And there's nothing, there is nothing wrong. There's no conspiracy. I really resent the accusation that there was a conspiracy. I haven't talked to any of these members, uh, since last, two weeks ago, sitting right up here. We're not allowed to do that. So, uh, charge away, speculate, do that, throw the spaghetti at the wall, see what sticks. But it doesn't work anymore. I'm surprised you still keep doing it. Yeah, you're nodding your head. Yeah, yeah, I'm going to keep doing it. We know that's your, that's your game, but it's a game to you, Mr. Williams. It's not a game to any of us up here. This is real and the public deserves the truth. You can leave your games at home.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir. You have some? As long as it's not on the agenda, something new.
Not on the agenda. Regarding the, uh, the gentleman behind me about the pesticides?
Yes.
It takes nine years to, for an avocado tree to grow. And I had a beautiful avocado tree, huge avocados. And avocado trees are weed. And when they spray, killed my avocado tree. So I had to plant two more avocados away from where they spray. I'm done with that. Next item is, I live on Schuman Hotobon. I don't know if you know of, uh, they speed up and down the road more than 30 miles an hour. The sidewalks are in terrible shape. And I was told they were going to start repairing them in October. They spend a lot of money on spread spray paint and cones, barricades. I have a hard time walking. My dog have to go around these things. It's difficult for me. I'm done with that. And I live on the lake, Schuman Lake. And I live on the lake, Schuman Lake, and when I bought my property back in 2002, I asked. They said, "Well, someday you'll get a bulkhead." Well, it's not hap- My neighbors, they try to repair their bulkhead, but they're not allowed. So, it's the city's responsibility to fix a bulkhead, maybe put some in. The ones that are existing, they're all asbestos. They either need to be removed or covered up. That's all I have.
Okay. Well, some of the ones, as far as the bulkhead, you can get in contact with Mr. Griffin. He could tell you, and you know, the concerns about the sidewalks in your area. Sure, we could have Mr. Watanabe look at them, and it depends when they're getting fixed, where you're on the list, you know? As far as the avocado tree, if you're done raising avocados, or like the lady said, you could put a sign, "No spraying," and-
I like that idea. I will do that.
All right. But Mr. Griffin will give you his card, and you can speak with him further. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thomas Wesley Bowman, George Street, Sebastian. God bless you all. Come with two items and had no idea they were gonna be discussed before I ever got here. They do spray in the canal behind my house, and the wildlife stays away for a few days, or however long, until it wears off, which I think it's half-life is like nine days. Just heard about a mishap that destroyed grass out at the golf course. What if there happened to be a mishap and two or three cities had a mishap in the same day, and then a big flood came, rain washed all that mishap out into the lagoon? Wonder if that could kill grass out there, possibly? If I put up a sign saying, "No spraying," are they gonna come by with manually and clear it out for me? Or is it just gonna grow and cause problems? So, enough of that issue. Waste Management. I moved next door, I lived at one address on George Street, moved to the next address, called Waste Management to have, to have the trash transferred to the new house. After they did all that, taking my information, he said the new price will be $14, the old thing. And just because I watch on TV, which I'm not getting as much as I used to, it helps out having it on TV, I knew that it was $11. So, I told him, "It's $11." He said, "Well, let me see, let me see." He checks out, says, "Oh, the computer put it down, it's 14." Acted like he was doing me a favor and brought it back down to 11. I won't, this happened to my next-door neighbor also. He signed up. I said, "Well, what are you paying?" He said, "The 14." I said, "It's supposed to be 11." He called and had him switch it down. I wonder if this is happening to more residents and we don't know about it. Could you please check into that?
Well, I mean, that's one of the things. We don't know unless we're told about it. And if you see Mr. Griffin, he can give you Bob Dela Cruz from Waste Management, and he's, you know, good about it. And I think we have the rates up on Channel 25 that are up there, what they're supposed to be, you know, and hopefully people get informed.
Okay. Is there a way they could get a list from Waste Management of every name and every price?
Am I in the business to see what kind of deal you got? I mean, it's the same thing like with Comcast. You paying more than me or less than me?
Well, no, it should not be. It should be $11 for every resident.
It should be $11 for every resident.
So, how do we, how do we check them?
I've got some ideas.
Okay.
I've got some ideas.
And I have a new neighbor moving in on the other side. We're moving in the first month. That's the first question I'm gonna ask him, how much you paying for?
You should call with them. Be a good neighbor. Make sure he gets that $11.
I wanna come to that house.
I wanna see him get charged 14.
No, I wanna be there when he or she calls. I would like to be there. And I just would like to add, I brought your issue. This guy called me. I forgot, you know, I've never, we've never met.
Is it Walmart?
Oh, was, okay. Oh, I thought you, well, geez. Anyway, we had a discussion on this, and I did bring this to Waste Management's attention. And in fact, I mentioned it to the city manager, that, hey. And it just happened to coincide with some other issues that were going on with Waste Management at the time. I have some other ideas on how to check that. I would like to, I would like to be at your neighbor's house when they're, I would come over there, or if they have a cell phone they wanna call from, I can't call from my house.
They're new neighbors, so I don't know if I wanna stick that in their faces the day they move in.
Okay, all right. Well, I have some other ideas-
I will find out.
On how to check, and I will. I promise.
Anything else, Mr. Bowman?
Congratulations. You were mayor for 10 minutes. God bless you all.
Thank you. Anyone else of public input? No? All right. There's been no new business? Mr. Attorney, any matters for us tonight?
No matters.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin?
Just one thing, sir. Next meeting, the 23rd of March, is City Clerk Sally Mayo's last meeting. I would like some direction from council as to how they wish to proceed on her replacement, and if you wanna talk to me at a later time individually, that'd be fine, or how you wanna proceed. Just let me know.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Ma'am?
Actually, I just wanted to mention that early voting starts in the council chambers right here on March 4th, March 5th, I'm sorry, Saturday, March 5th through Saturday, March 12th, from 7:30 until 4:00 each day. And I thought that was important for people to know. And I've had a few people ask me, and I've directed them to Leslie Swan, but just so that people know, for the presidential primary, it is only for Republicans and Democrats. People like me with no party cannot vote.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to let my fellow council members know that I have nothing but the greatest amount of respect for every single one of you, and I look forward to working together to do the tasks that we've been all hired by the citizens of this community to do. I'm grateful to be able to sit up here and work with you, and I know you are too. So, as we go forward, I hope that we can move forward in a way that is best for the people of the city of Sebastian. And I can assure you that I will be doing that, and I hope all of us will. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I guess not everything's bad in this city. I guess they had opening day at the Little League last Saturday. I was down there and seeing a bunch of gray, smiling faces, and I think, you know, the city personnel did a fantastic job keeping the upkeep of the field. I mean, they look beautiful, way better than the fields I played on as a child. Yesterday, I got to speak at the Gifford Middle School. They had career day, and I know coming forward, some of the council members have been invited by Sebastian River Middle School, or also Storm Grove Middle School, and I encourage you to take the opportunity to speak to the young people, because they got a lot to say on their mind, and a lot of bright, young minds, and hopefully, well, I know there'll be future leaders, and hopefully compassionate, good future leaders. Well, on another note, I see Mayor Kramer was here visiting from Vero Beach. This morning, they had Castle, which prevents child abuse, one of the organizations in our four-county area. They have a memory field, and they have it down at Bailey's Medical Service, which is off of 7th Street and US-1. And they have 145 flags that are flying, and each one of those flags represents a child that died due to abuse or neglect in the past year. And 145 children is a lot of children, unfortunately. In the previous years, it's been about 110 to 120, and anything we can do to prevent even one child's death. And this, they do this in commemoration typically with Child Abuse Month, and they move the memory field from Stewart, from Martin County to Indian River County, and then it's gonna make a tour to Okeechobee Counties, as well as St. Lucie Counties. So, if you, if you see the flags flying down there along US-1, each of those flags, as I said, represents a child who died due to abuse or neglect, and if we can stop just one, that one child could change the world. Thank you. Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, Mayor Carlin. I have some things that have been, I've been working on. The SHIP program is a affordable housing. Are you familiar with that? Sebastian is approved for up to $200,000 a year in affordable housing money through SHIP. I spoke with Elizabeth Woodruff, who is the director of that program from Fort Pierce. They're the closest city that does that, and it was pretty interesting, because she said, she sent me three emails that had, including some, some stuff about the program and how they're using it. Basically, the government gives you $200,000 to use for fixing up houses, or it can be used for low-income folks for down payment. And the only requirement is that, that you either administer it, you can actually hire somebody to administer it for you and pay for that out of the SHIP funds. So, it sounds like a win-win. The money is there. It's not a new tax. The money is already in the government's coffer. If we don't ask for it, some of the other city will get it. So, I wanted your permission to forward you those emails through Sally's office, so that you can look at it, maybe bring it back to city council.
Sure. I think, you know, some of those dollars are transferred. The county administers some of the funds through the Treasure Coast Homeless Services Council. So, they do a lot of that administration. So, sure, if you send it, and, you know, there's a lot of programs that, and I think we put a lot of them on Channel 25, programs that are eligible. It's based on income and eligibility for refabbing homes, updating homes, as well as they help with, you know, Treasure Coast Homeless Services Council with rental assistance, because the key is to get them before they become homeless, to try and maintain them.
And they can, they can pay out up to $20,000 to rehab a house or paint it, put a new roof on, and that's, and that's, so that's, there's $200,000 available for the city if we opt into that program. So, I'll just have Sally forward you all that.
Yeah, if you can get them to me by tomorrow, because Friday I have a meeting with the Treasure Coast Homeless Services Council.
The county administers SHIP. They have, they already have the organization there. In fact, we have some people in the city of Sebastian who have received SHIP money. I helped one guy fill out the form, and it goes through the county.
Wouldn't you like to get another 200,000?
If there's another 200, we'll get it.
I mean, that's, that's a no-brainer.
Right, no, absolutely.
We need someone to administer it. Perhaps we can get the county to help.
You can actually hire somebody. You can have a, that's all in here, the email. You can actually hire a company, there's companies that do that, so it's nothing out of your pocket to administer the funds. That's one item. The other one that I think that I'd like to have council take a look at is the few canal walls that we have that are failing. I was over to Mr. Johnson's on, I think it's, is it Joy Haven? And the, the canal section at his house looked like it'd gone another foot, foot and a half. I have pictures here that I forwarded to Mr. Griffin. I went out to his, his house a year ago. I've got pictures from a year ago, and I got pictures from last week, February 13th, and there seems to be quite a bit of subsidence. I don't, I don't see how it can last another year. I don't, our city engineer is not around, but I think we've, we've got to come up with some type of a fix for that, and I think it's something that city council has to talk about. So... The other item that I had was, I've been taking a look at some of our contracts lately, and it appears that when we write a contract for Kern's Construction, or whomever does our work here at the city, there is a boilerplate, or there's a, there's a, a type of contract wording that gets spit out no matter what job is. And it's our job to take a look and peruse the contracts that come to the city council, but I don't know about you, but I don't read every word in the contract. I probably should. And so, just for three contracts all throughout, there are Kern's Construction, the Kern's Construction for the bathrooms on the golf course had a liquidated damages built in of $100 a day. Okay? So, they were supposed to start, I guess they started September 15th of last year. They were supposed to be done in January 15th of this year, which is four months. They didn't make their deadline. I sent an email to our city manager and said, "Well, I assume that they're in liquidated damages," and he said, "No, they're not." He gave them another month, or something like that, to finish. It was $100 a day for that, for that project. I checked the other contracts, and the same company, of course, has the bathrooms over here. Contract liquidated damages for that is $100 a day. And I checked the contract for the irrigation. Would anyone care to guess what the liquidated damages is for, is for a million-dollar job on the, on the golf course for putting in irrigation? You'd be right if you chose $100 a day. So, I think we need a fix there. I think any right-thinking person, if you have a contract for a million dollars or close to it, and you only have liquidated damages, which means if they don't perform the contract, you can charge them $100 a day, that's not gonna mean a whole lot to them. The same company, Kern's Construction, has a 500 and some-odd thousand-dollar contract to put in a storage facility on the golf course. Once again, I checked, and the liquidated damages are $100 a day. And it's important that we get that thing done within a certain amount of time, because city manager tells me that if we don't, our grant monies from the FAA perhaps would be in jeopardy. So, I'm just saying that from now on, I'll be looking a lot closer, Mr. Griffin, at the contract in our package, and I would hope that we could do something other than $100 a day on liquidated damages on a contract that's a half million dollars or a million dollars. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I had.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to say that our city council today is made history, and not for a good thing. I think this was the first time in our history that we've had a reorganization in the middle of a, of the term. It's not even a, you know, election or anything like that. So, that, I think, was pretty unfortunate. One thing that I'm really disturbed about is the way that our former mayor, Mr. Gilmore, was treated if he had issues. I believe he should've been brought to his attention, given the opportunity to rectify those issues before any action was taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Coy?
Just to tag on that, Mr. Vice Mayor, the only place we can rectify those issues are here. So, just so that that's clear.
Yes, and I would have, I would have liked if we had given him the opportunity to rectify whatever differences are what we had.
But just, just, that's, that's okay. Woulda, coulda, shoulda. I believe the opportunity was there. But anyway, my, I have two items. I would like to agendize Ms. Mayo's retirement for the next meeting, because we have to deal with it. So, please put that on the next agenda, so that we, as council, can decide what are we gonna do to fill the charter officer slot. That is our job. And the other item I would like to have agendized is to please invite the Art Club back, that's another month from now, and get an update from them on where they are, what's the status, and discuss the lease. On the 3/23 agenda. And other than that, I think that's, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Being no other matters, we're in adjournment.